Seven o'clock on time. It is now seven o'clock. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of East Point Council Meeting on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We always begin our council meetings with God and prayer, always led by our councilwoman, Ms. Sarah Lucido, and then we lead and go into our pleasure of allegiance. Again, thank you for coming to our meeting. Ms. Lucido?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Dear God, we are grateful for the unusual warm weather this week that has allowed us to get outside and take a break from winter. We are grateful for the chance to reconnect with our friends and neighbors on our streets and in our parks. Please help us to start each day with an open heart and an open mind so that we can strive to better understand each other and to make our city an even better place to live. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're going to go into our roll call. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here, East Point, Michigan.
Oh, East Point, Michigan.
Thank you. Councilmember Lucido?
Here, East Point, Michigan.
Councilmember Moore?
Here in East Point.
Mayor Owens?
Here at East Point. Thank you so much. Now as approval of the agenda with an addition, I want to add a proclamation of the National Women's History Month. Any additional additions to this, council?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a proclamation to recognize Women's History Month.
A second. Thank you. Move to support it. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
No.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Now I have the proclamation here for National Women's History Month, and I always read the proclamations. I want to give the council, any councilmember a chance to read it at this time. Would anybody else like to read it?
No, you go ahead, Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay.
I don't have it.
I don't have it either.
Oh, you guys don't have it? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was sent to you all. I'm sorry about that. Well, I guess I'll read it then. Next time I'll make sure everyone has it. Thank you, Mr. Gaston, for sending it to me as well. It was something I added last minute, so I apologize. So going into the City of East Point proclamation is to recognize National Women's History Month of March 2021. Whereas the City of East Point recognizes the month of March as Women's History Month, established in 1987 by Congress to celebrate the contribution American women have made to strengthen and lead the nation since its inception. And whereas Women's History Month honors women of every race, status, and ethnicity who have challenged the social and legal structures that have kept women's labor unappreciated and unrepresented throughout history, to establish an equal role for women, ensuring the appreciation and value of equitable labor for future generations. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also at the forefront of every major progressive social change movement in history, paving the way for future generations to enjoy the unalienable rights, duties, and responsibilities afforded equally to all citizens of the United States of America. And whereas each woman is extraordinary in her own way, providing that women working inside the home or outside in academic, science, technology, business, labor, governance, and more maintain a critical role in every sphere of society. Now therefore, we, the City Council for the City of East Point, do hereby recognize March as Women's History Month to honor women everywhere for their outstanding achievements and invaluable contributions to society. Thank you again, Mr. Gaston, for bringing that out. And again, happy Women's History Month to all women. No matter what you do, how you do it, we value you. We are going to the hearing of the public, and this will be our first opening of the hearing of the public. We also, we always do two, one in the beginning and one at the end. You get three minutes to speak, and we ask people to be respectful to those who are speaking, and those who are speaking to be respectful to people who are listening to you. So we will now open the hearing of the public.
Mary Hall Rayford would like to speak first.
Okay, one second, so I can make sure I get the stopwatch on. Good evening, Ms. Rayford. You state your name and residency before I start.
I think you're still on mute, Ms. Rayford.
Okay. Mary Hall Rayford, East Point Advocate and activist. Good evening, everyone. I'm looking at the agenda and noticed that the reappointments for our planning commission is coming up this evening, and I just wanted to offer one word of caution. When we have people who have vested interest in the city, have spent time demonstrating that, I think we do the city a disservice to replace them willy-nilly. And so I encourage all to think very deliberatively and make the best decision for the city rather than personal agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. We have anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
The... I don't see any hands raised. There's nothing in the chat.
Dana, I'm thinking.
Sorry, Linda Flans just popped up with her hand raised.
Oh, good evening. Good evening, Ms. Flans. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, ma'am.
Good. Linda Flans, East Point resident. I just wanted to also agree with what Mary Hall Rayford said. I don't believe, I don't support changing the planning commissioners, and I don't think that changing three of the seven commissioners within a few months is in the best interest of the city. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't want to cut anyone off.
Just had a few people enter the meeting.
Okay.
Sorry, Eric Moore would like to speak next.
Yes, good evening.
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Council. As many of you know, I am the owner of Ken South Park and one of the partners of Holistic Industries. My name's Eric Moore, by the way, which currently owns the property of 20958 Grashit. You may have noticed, we gave the old Don's truck wagon a facelift with outdoor cleanup and paint. We are excited to continue the upgrade of the site and improvements of the surrounding area. As part of other plans, Ken South Park and Holistic Industries will be sponsoring another community holiday ham donation. At the upcoming event, we will be giving away vouchers to support the local community food bank for Pastor Rush at Emmanuel East Point on March 24th. Some of you were able to stop by for our Christmas ham event that we sponsored. At that event, we donated 250 winters hams to help local East Point families during the holidays in what has been an incredibly tough year for so many residents. This event was extremely successful, and we were happy to answer the call to support our residents again. As a local business owner with a long history in the community, I look forward to continuing these types of programs and expanding our outreach in the city for years to come. We hope to take on more projects similar to what we've been doing in other communities we serve. We've been, we have begun programs to help clean and maintain empty lots and green spaces at our Detroit dispensary and planted trees and sponsored a public mural in Madison Heights. We are also active members of the Chamber of Commerce, where I recently hosted the Coffee Hour for all chamber members. During the Coffee Hour, there was a lot of positive interest and questions regarding the possibility of cannabis coming to East Point. Several chamber members even shared personal stories around how medical cannabis helped them in the past and present. Currently, we are waiting on the cannabis facility application to be released and to better understand the process. We are excited for the opportunity to apply. We have been here since the beginning of cannabis discussions in East Point and look forward to the applications coming out soon. Thank you for all of your diligent work on this. I look forward to continuing to promote East Point and its residents for years to come. If anybody wants to join us to help hand out hams on Saturday, April 3rd, from 9:00 to 11:00 at Ken South Park, feel free to stop by and say hi and give a hand. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for what you're doing in our community. You have anyone else?
I don't see anything in the chat, and there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, thank you again, Ms. Walton. The first hearing of the public is now closed. Moving to approval of the minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 16th, 2021.
Port?
Move to support it. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Moore?
She's on.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you. We have no scheduled hearings. Moving to unfinished business for the reappointment, appointment of planning commission members. I know this was put on by our councilwoman, Sarah Lucido, and councilman, DeMonico. You guys want to open it up?
Thank you, Mayor. I will begin. I did make the recommendation to reappoint the four existing members to on the planning commission. I know that, you know, in the past, I made the decision to not reappoint one of the existing members, and I kind of regret that because, looking back, I do agree with what some of the other residents that spoke about today. A lot of these people have donated a lot of time and effort into our city, and I don't think that all we, you know, taking that for granted is really the right way to handle it. I think that if we have issues with their decisions or how they're thinking, sometimes it's better maybe to sit down and try to have those open discussions with these members to see where they're coming from and hear their point of views on why they're making certain decisions, and maybe help work with them to be more efficient instead of just replacing them. I, we have a lot of openings right now on boards and commissions. Lot, I think every board and commission has vacant seats with the exception of planning. I don't think we even have enough applications right now to fill all of those vacant positions. So with that said, I think that it would be important to, you know, show appreciation to these members who have served a long time and worked very hard on the master plan, and so they have an opportunity to actually work on implementing that master plan that they worked so hard on doing.
So I, I was, I would support her motion.
I didn't ask for support right now. I want to talk with, I want to Mr. The Mon, Councilman DeMonico to speak because they put this on the agenda. So now, Councilman DeMonico, did you want to speak on this?
Sure, Madam Mary. I'll speak about this. So I put forward to reappoint Ms. Yulinski and Mr. Laland, and then appoint two new commission members, Ms. Cassandra Ford and Mr. Cliff Wilson. And I did this, I mean, I thought about this a lot. I didn't think about this just on a whim or anything. And I did speak to the two commissioners that I did not want to reappoint. I'm all about open discussions and talking to people. I just feel that these four that I put forward would be the best bet for the planning commission, and that's why I put their names forward.
I have another quick question. So we never received any, like, applications until these names were put forward. Were there any other applications for planning commission members that we just didn't have, like, the opportunity to review? I guess that'd be a question for me, Ms. Doom.
That's a good question. I was going to ask that too, Ms. Doom.
Not that I'm aware of. We do have Chris Gatson on, and Otis does receive them. So Otis, if you could show yourself. He likes to hide. Is Otis there?
I'm here.
Otis, did we, did we get any last minute applications that, that I'm not aware of or the council may not be aware of?
No, we have not received any. Usually when we get them, from my understanding, when I was trained on it, when we get them, they go to the building official. So we do keep a copy of everyone to get, and then we send a copy to the official.
Okay.
And from there, she submits a memo, and then memo goes to council with the recommendation for those who have applied and, and or expressed interest to either be appointed or reappointed to the board.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Gaston. Now, was this the application on the website and everything for a planning commission for people to know about, to apply?
Yes, the application is online.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing is too, is that I do know that Mr. Wilson already serves on ZBA, and I am a little concerned that that could be a possible conflict of interest being on planning and on ZBA.
Madam Mayor, addressed Councilmember Lucido's point?
Yes, please.
Yes, under the city ordinance, under zoning board of appeals regarding section 50-50 establishing membership subsection 10, it does indicate that no member or alternate member of the zoning board of appeals shall serve as a member of the planning commission. So there would be a incompatibility of office issue if, in fact, the council did appoint Mr. Wilson. If the council did appoint Mr. Wilson to the planning commission, he would then need or no longer be able to serve in his capacity on the zoning board of appeals, which would then create a vacancy.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is part of my concern because we already have one open full seat on ZBA and an alternate seat open on ZBA.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
What was that, Ms. Moore? Councilwoman Moore?
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I can see you. That's one. Okay, there you go.
So my question is this. On Friday, I did email the city manager to find out how long each member has served on this board, and I haven't gotten a response yet. So part of my vote would be to know and understand how long each member has served. I don't know if we're looking for a lifetime like a judge, you know, you get on the board and you die on the board type of situation, or if we're actually, you know, trying to give other people opportunities. But until I get that information, I couldn't even do an educated vote on it because I don't know. And another thing, I couldn't find it on the website. I did, you know, I noticed, like, 2/12/2020 that we had posted open seat, so, you know, service spot, but I couldn't find the planning on the, on the website. Where, where is it?
Yeah, that's why I was asking, Ms. Doom. I didn't see it either. Maybe you bypassed it for some reason. I don't know. But, Ms. Doom?
You know, I haven't looked on the website recently. I'm going to have Otis back up. Otis, if you could share with us where it is on the website?
I can jump in too. So on our homepage, there is like a main icon that states forms and documents, and under there, there's a title for residence, and then it's listed under board and commission application.
Okay.
I can send a link for, for that, if that'd be helpful.
So I noticed with the open seat that they had on the civil, they actually had it in news and, you know, announcements. So it was in a different area of the website. So do we place some in one area and some in another? How do we do that?
I think we're talking about two different things. Councilwoman Moore, you're talking about announcements for openings, and then Ms. Walton was talking about just the generic board and commission application.
Right. So even though the application is there, how would anyone know that they're able to apply so that they could respond for tonight?
Well, I did ask at the last meeting that we post about it, and we didn't, so.
We did not post. So there aren't anyone that would have knowledge unless it was at the last city council meeting that we were actually, you know, looking for planners. I mean, people could be on a planning commission.
Right. I agree. So we're not giving people an opportunity to actually apply. And so it's a lot of inconsistencies here. So I'm thinking you want to table this again, Ms. Moore? What do you think?
Yes, I would make.
Madam Mayor, if I could.
Councilman Curly, you're interrupting. I want to see what if she want to do, then I'll go to you.
If she's, if she's going to table it, then I can't talk.
No, I'm gonna go to you. I want to see what she was going to say. You have to let people get a chance. Like, I'm gonna give you a chance, okay? Ms. Moore, Councilwoman, I apologize. What were you going to say?
Yes, I would like to table it until it is open to the public.
Okay.
Posted on the website.
Councilwoman Curly?
Thank the Madam Mayor for not asking for a second to begin with. Yeah, I can understand why Sylvia wants to table it, but I, I've got to put my concerns and objection in first, so it's on the record, Madam Mayor, if I may. I think what Councilman DeMonico did was not fair to the rest of the council. None of, none of the rest of us four had an opportunity to put something, something that, wanting to appoint two people on the council, not knowing if that, those four people were going to be appointed or not appointed. Usually we all, if we respect one another, and there is no respect in this instance, that all of us would have an opportunity to submit the people that we would like to have put on the planning commission. Doesn't matter right now as we speak if there's an application at City Hall. If we think of somebody that we would like to have on there, they would go to City Hall and put the application in. So I'm extremely disappointed in the fact that we nearly had to vote on two, two people for the planning commission when the four of us didn't have an opportunity to do that. But thank you for letting me put that out, Madam Mayor, and you can call for a second now. And of course, there's no, there's no discussion or debate once there's a second to the tabling motion. And I would, I would, I would table the motion. I support.
Well, I always want to hear what a councilperson has to say, even though we have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilman DeMonico, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Councilman Curly, anybody can put an appointment to the planning commission on the agenda at any point in time. I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Lucido, that's what she did. She put four appointments on the agenda, and mine were submitted after hers, if, I mean, if the agenda's in order. And so I just submitted four that, people that I'd like to see appointed. I mean, if, if they're not voted in, then they're not voted in, but anybody from city council can put forward anybody to the planning commission that they'd like.
I have a question for Councilman DeMonico, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I have, so did you get these applications for Ms. Ford and Mr. Wilson before Friday? Because we didn't receive ours until Friday. You had them already on the agenda on Friday, so I'm assuming you've had the applications before Friday?
No, I spoke to them and asked them to put in applications, and I got them in the agenda packet also. They didn't send that, or, you know, I didn't see them until then either.
No, I just wasn't sure. I didn't know, I didn't know if they were like old people that, you know, applied before, and then they just resubmitted applications, and that's why you contacted them.
Madam Mayor?
Well, one was, one wasn't.
Well, we have, I'm gonna let Councilman Curly, then we have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, two things. I'm withdrawing my second to the play the motion because by our own rules, Sturgis rules are, are Roberts rules. There is absolutely no comments or, or discussion on the motion that is tabling after you get a second. So I'm withdrawing my second, so the five of us don't get in trouble, particularly the mayor. Cardi, reappointing something, somebody's a lot different than submitting, submitting two new applications for that position. So, Madam Mayor, I'm not going to say anything more, but so you can call for a second, we can take the vote.
Well, Councilwoman Moore, motion to table it. Do we have a second on that?
Madam Mayor, I will support that motion.
Okay, motion support, motion a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes, and I would like to add to that, even though this is roll call, that it is posted on the website. Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Moving right along to reports from administration.
I'm sorry, if we could just go back, was, when was that agenda item for unfinished business going to be tabled to the next meeting or the second meeting in April? I just, I just need clarification.
I'm fine with the next meeting. It gives two weeks for people to submit applications.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying it. Okay, moving right along to reports from administration with our city manager, Ms. Doom. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. To segue in what we were just talking about, I'd like to share with council. I've emailed this to you today, but I'm also sharing it tonight so our residents can hear. We do have a number of vacancies on boards and commissions, and they are being advertised as we speak. We have one vacancy on the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission. We have one alternate vacancy on the Assessment Board of Review. We have four vacancies on the Beautification Commission, two vacancies on the DDA. They must be business owners within the DDA district. We also have one vacancy on the Elected Officers Compensation Commission, one vacancy on the Parks Commission, and one member vacancy, and also one alternate member vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeal. So as you can, you can see we have a lot of vacancies as Ms. Lucido had indicated on a lot of our boards and commissions. I'd also like to share with you, and we've got this on our Facebook page, that if you haven't been down Grashit lately, it's fast becoming a disaster. They are going to do a reconstruction project that will last two years. It'll be from 11 mile to 14 mile road. And please come to the City of East Point website. You'll learn a little bit more. On Wednesday, March 10th, at 6:00 PM, the chamber is going to host an information session. So there's an RSVP at thechamber.com. They'll give you the Zoom information. Again, come to our website or come to our Facebook page. If people would like to learn a little bit more about what's going to happen, I went down there myself today, and they are ready to go. They've got all the, the heavy equipment up the road and off on the sides, and they're going to get moving quickly. And I'd also like to share with you that our petitions will be available for the open seats on council. There'll be two seats that are open for the November 2nd, 2021 election. It is for registered voters for the City of East Point, and they will have an opportunity to cast two votes for members of city council for a term ending 11, 10, 2025. Now, this will be a ranked choice voting election. So as we've had with the others, you'll vote your number one choice, you'll vote your number two choice, and you'll keep on going depending on how many people have decided to run. um, have decided to run. So the qualifications are that you must be a U S citizen and a qualified and registered voter of the City of East Point. And folks will need a minimum of one hundred valid petition signatures. And there are a few other forms. They're all due before Tuesday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-one, or I should say on or before. But the deadline is July twentieth, twenty twenty-one at four P M. So petitions and information can be picked up at City Hall. And our clerks have asked me to share this information with all of you. And beginning tomorrow, it will be posted on our Facebook site and our website. So I'll remind folks as we go on, as we get closer to election time, when petition deadline is, and we'll just see who wants to come join council and wants to make a difference in our community. And that's my report for today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for our city manager council?
Yes. Madam Mayor? Yes. Um, actually, I do have a quick question for Ms. Doom. I was wondering if we could get an update on how the status with the marijuana ordinance is coming, if there's any site in the coming up where we're going to be starting to accept applications or anything like that.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Albright can certainly update you as he gives his report. At any time, he's working closely with Ms. Holman. And, uh, either one of them will be glad to step up and, and give a little bit more information.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Doom? Moving right along to our finance, our finance director, Mr. Blum. Good evening, Mr. Blum.
Madam Mayor and Council, um, water bills we're talking about later, so I'll skip that. So the only other thing I have is I will be out of the office the next three days. Um, I realized at seven o'clock I did not put my out of office notice. So if you send me an email and I don't respond, I'll get to it on Monday. Um, that's really all I have at this point.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for our finance director? Hey, thank you, Mr. Blum. Moving right along to our city attorney, Mr. Albright. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. A couple of things this evening. Uh, the first is, um, I will be meeting with, uh, Director Roche. Um, Court Administrator Hyatt and, uh, Judge Galen tomorrow to go over, um, recent changes in Michigan law. Um, back in January of this year, uh, Governor Gretchen Whitmer, uh, signed several jail reform bills. Uh, those, uh, new laws affect, uh, how appearance tickets are handled in the District Court, uh, also how arrest warrants are processed. Uh, jail sentencing, community supervision, driver's license suspensions and misdemeanor reclassifications. Uh, we are going to be, uh, meeting jointly tomorrow, uh, when I finish the, uh, docket over at the court to discuss how those, uh, uh, changes will affect how, uh, East Point conducts, uh, of the processing of criminal matters. Uh, Ms. Hardcastle also informed me, uh, earlier this week that, uh, she is narrowing down the list of potential properties to schedule for show cause hearings. Uh, she informed me, uh, this morning that she should have that list, uh, by Friday of this week. Uh, once I receive that, I will forward that list to the council. And then, uh, the council can then schedule, uh, show cause hearings, uh, uh, for a future, uh, council meeting and I will then make sure that the, uh, necessary notices, uh, go out. With regard to, uh, the, uh, processing of applications, uh, Ms. Holman did contact me, uh, last week. And, uh, there, there are a couple of sections in the city's current ordinance that city administration believes could be amended with regard to, uh, streamlining the process. Uh, Ms. Holman's going to be providing me with, um, a memo of what those sections are to bring in front of the council for possible ordinance amendments, but I do believe that, uh, the process is coming to an end. I don't know if Ms. Holman is, uh, is, uh, participating in this, this evening's meeting that she can provide any further insight. I did not see her under the participant list when I, when I checked, but, uh, and then the council's in receipt of our monthly status report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for our city attorney? And, uh, moving right along to new business.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item A, engineering proposal for risk and resiliency assessment. Any conversation on this? If we don't have any conversation, um, motion?
Madam Mayor, I will motion to authorize Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick Incorporated to conduct the risk and reliance assessment and emergency response plan as stated in the proposal dated February eighth, twenty twenty-one, and authorize the city manager to sign the proposal.
Second. Moving second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the bid award for the tree removal and trimming contract. Council, any discussion on this?
No, Madam Mayor, but I will make a motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
A motion to award the bid for the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three tree removal and maintenance contract to the low bidder, Advanced Tree Experts of Riley, Michigan for the unit prices stated in the bid, seminal dated one thirty-one, two thousand and one.
Support.
Motion supporter, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is a sidewalk contract extension. Any discussion on this council? If not, can I get a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor, I will motion to extend the contract with Italian Construction at twenty twenty pricing for the twenty twenty-one sidewalk repair program as recommended by AEW.
Support. And supported, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Number more?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item is item D, approval to use AEW services for completion of charging stations, design, and cost estimates. Any discussion on this?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but I would like to table this till our next meetings, just so I have more time. There was a lot of information given to us. Um, to go through the information, I know Councilman De Monaco emailed a bunch of questions and got a bunch of responses. So I have more time to go through those and maybe do a little bit of research on my own before we make a decision going forward, if the rest of council orders.
I agree with you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, if we have AEW on the call and, uh, Mr. Blums here, if they could give like a quick intro at least now and maybe that'll help, um, narrow questions down to, or maybe answer at least a couple. I mean, I'm all for, you know, table and if we don't have all the info we think we need, but, um, maybe that'll help.
Is all their information in the packet, correct? Or no?
Well.
If asking for the information in the packet, I mean, I see the AEW packet. So you want them to do a brief, uh, summary on why we need this?
Yeah, I guess my, my, yeah, my first question, I see Mr. Kern from AEW's here, um, would just be like, what? What would this proposal actually entail? Cause I know Mr. Mr. Blums, you know, talks about a specific amount of charging stations. I mean, was AEW going to see which ones or what type or like where, where were we asking them to do what and what were they doing? I guess, uh, I, I was a little confused about.
Yeah, we have, uh, Ryan Kern with Anderson Eckstein and Westrick. Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
We really haven't looked into it too much yet. Uh, I know Mr. Blum had brought this to our attention that this would be coming forth. Um, I wasn't involved with the original charging stations that were installed over at City Hall. It's my understanding, I believe that there's three there now. Look, and that possibly expanding that to eleven charging stations. I'm not sure those are the correct numbers, but um, basically this proposal would have us look at what are the best options for, uh, charging stations. I know we'd have to look and see, uh, based on the existing electrical and the conduits that were installed out there, whether that's sufficient or we would have to install additional. Um, that would be all part of the proposal here in front of you tonight.
Ms. Doom, I have a question. Um, when did we get those charging stations at City Hall and how, um, how many times has it been really used? I hate spending money that and wasting money that for something we don't use. Cause we, I think we have two now, two or three now, and no one really rarely uses it. And to get eleven.
Right.
I would like to see how, you know, how, how many times what we already have has been used. And I would like to get the data on how many electric cars that the residents use. Is this something that we need in our community right now?
Well, I can tell you that it was a project that was started under city manager, um, Duchaine and completed under interim city manager Ryan Cotton. And it's my understanding that there is conduit out to our charging station. There's enough for three, but there's only one there. And, um, since I've been on board, I've seen one car charging. And that was Mr. Cotton's because he drove an electric car. But the question is if we start to, the real question is if we start to slowly switch over to electric cars as we, you know, have our turnover on vehicles, we have to be prepared. And that's where there may be up to eleven or maybe less. Uh, depends. It, it's still pretty new for us because we don't have electric cars yet. And we don't know exactly what type of charging stations. I, I've learned a lot from, um, Cardi and from, from, uh, um, our finance director on the type of charging stations there are, the quick ones, the slow ones, everything in between. So, um, yeah, so to my knowledge, and I believe Mr. Blum had mentioned that he'd seen one other car at, at another time charge using our charging station. Because electric cars are, well, at this point, they're, they're still quite expensive. And so there's not a lot of people that own them, um, but we do have it available as a, you know, as a courtesy as a city that someone could pull up to City Hall while they're there, they can charge.
Thank you. Councilman Crowley? You're muted, sir. You're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, guy, guys, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, did we talk about getting three electric cars per year for the next three years? Is that Cardi, am I close to that? Is that correct?
Yeah, that was roughly it. And then like, since it was ten altogether, just throw the fourth one in on one of the three years, whatever administration thought.
Okay, so ten. So I guess my first question, and that's why we tabled this thing, because there are a lot of if we have nine or ten, why are we getting the eleven stations? And if it's going to be over the next three years, why are we in such a hurry to get them installed now? I mean, those are questions that don't have to be answered now, but that's, I guess that's why we're, we have a lot of questions between now and time that just gets put back in, but I, I'm just saying, well, you're going to have eleven stations there and it's going to be three years before we get all the cars. Doesn't make any sense.
You have to run all the, uh, the wiring to be ready for all the necessary stations. You don't want to be um, tearing things up two and three times every time you add a new station. So the plan would be to get all of the, uh, the analysis done, figure out what our needs are, get the wiring there. We don't have to install the stations immediately, but we need to at least get the wiring in.
Well, that's not what I heard. Excuse me. Uh, that's not what I heard. We're, we're investigating eleven stations. If you want to put the wiring and conduit in, that's fine, and then cover it up with whatever, but, uh, now you're saying, right, okay, but, but now you're saying we're not going to put eleven in there at one time over, over the three-year.
Right. And that's what we're looking for AEW to put together is what it would take to make, to fit our needs. Um, you know, and, and the key is getting the conduit, having the electrical available for what we need before things go in. And there are eleven vehicles at City Hall. Ten of them are for, uh, building and code enforcement. And then there's an eleventh one. That's a, uh, we just call it a city hall vehicle that's available to anybody that needs it for city business.
What do you mean, anybody?
Any, any employee that's going off to a meeting or they've got to deliver something or that, that's the, the small van that sits in the garage.
I know. I, I just, I know what you were going to say. I just want to clarify herself that it's employees and not city officials.
Yep.
All right.
Anyone else have anything? We have.
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to table.
I thought you already did.
I, I. I thought, I thought a motion, um, was already out there. I just need a second, I believe.
I think so, yeah. She did make a motion before and I seconded.
Okay.
I didn't know the motion was actually made, sorry.
Yeah, you did. You just, you just got a short. You just got a short, you just got a short memory, that's all.
It's been motion and second, please to table this. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, item E, enterprise lease vehicles for the police department. Also.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the order for this fiscal year and receive the vehicles for the next fiscal year.
Support.
Motion is supported. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Can I ask a quick, quick, uh, quick question before that?
Oh, yeah, Councilman.
Uh, I just wanted to just double check. I mean, and thank you for bringing this forward. This is exactly the program that we did approve for the enterprise leasing vehicles. I just wanted to make sure there were three contracts in the packet, uh, but we said five vehicles. I just wanted to confirm what is for what. I'm assuming the third one is, uh, not quantity of one. It's, uh, the patrol vehicles. There's three of them and then the first two contracts were one of each.
Ms. Doom, or we have the director wants to answer that.
I can answer that.
How you doing, sir?
Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We have, uh, one should be just for the three forward interceptors and then there's two separate contracts for, uh, the detective bureau vehicles.
Okay. Yep, that's all. I just wanted to double check. I didn't see quantities anywhere and just, uh,
Okay.
Just know exactly.
Yeah, there's three marked and two unmarked and we should receive them after July. And, uh, we've, uh, the drug forfeiture fund will be, uh, paying for these.
All right. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Yes, motion is seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you. Next item is discussion and possible approval extension on renewal of dog licenses. Council.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, I added this to the agenda tonight because I had a few residents reach out to me and they said that, um, you know, they received their letter in the mail for the renewal of dog licenses and it came a little bit later this year. There's been a lot of issues with our post office delivering mail late, things like that. I know city got, um, city has been a little bit behind too on some things because of COVID, short staffing, people working from home, things like that. So I just wanted to bring it up for discussion tonight, a possible motion to maybe extend it for sixty days because a lot of these people are having a hard time getting vet appointments to get their dogs with their rabies shots, so they could, um, get their renewed, get them renewed by March first. So I was just wondering if council would, you know, agree to maybe extend this for like sixty days, because even a lot of vets' offices were closed and are backlog with appointments. So it's even harder to get their animals in there to get vaccinated.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I, I, uh, thank you, Sarah, for bringing this up. Uh, I know for a fact firsthand that, um, a dear friend of mine from church tried to take his dog, uh, to the vet and, um, they said, we're, I know, we're, we're booked, we're booked, uh, a month ahead of time, so, uh, unless it's an emergency, um, you're not going to be able to get in here for thirty days, so sixty days i- is reasonable to extend that. Anyway, sixty days would be great.
Motion is supported. Please call the roll.
Mayor, can I add one quick comment?
Yes, sir.
And, um, Ms. Doom, can't we just work with these couple, uh, residents? I, you know, I saw one of the emails, I think that um, Ms. Lucido's referring to, you know, they had an appointment for their dog and then it had to be moved past the deadline. I mean, I think can't we just work with the couple residents? I think I just prefer the, the dates stay the same and we just work with residents that have these, you know, things outside of their control.
We certainly can. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, okay. Never mind.
Madam, Madam Mayor, my only concern is, is I did receive two phone calls from residents. Um, I guess I could try to track them down to let them know. I, I don't know.
And so what we're trying to do, uh, Councilwoman is trying to just make sure everyone is taken care of, because you might not be able to reach them and it might be more out there. So you're just trying to be proactive and connecting to those other ones. So you're just trying to be proactive and connecting to those other ones.
Right, madam.
Those same services. Well, we have, like I said, we have a uh, a motion and second. So. Let's go ahead with that. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Next item is discussion on the water bills. This is brought to you by Councilwoman Lucino, Ms. Lucino.
Yes, um, the reason why I added this on is I was just wondering, this is more, I guess I could have probably asked administration this, but. I wanted to have it on the agenda just because we decided to take action. Some people, and I don't know for sure if they have been receiving their water bills late every month. Um. Later than normal. I don't know if it's just the postal service once again, if it's um, an issue at City Hall. But I know that people said that I believe, like, not this water bill that just came out today, but the last cycle's water bill. They were, they had received it only a couple of days before it was due. I was just wondering if Mr. Blum had an update on whether or not water bills are going out late.
Um. Not by the city and not by our printer. There, for some reason, is a delay with East Point Post Office. I know even, I, because I talked to uh, staff that live in the city. And they were receiving their water bill, you know, five days or less before the due date. So it was taking two to three weeks for the mail to get delivered. In contrast, the one that went to the printer on Thursday hit the mailboxes today. You know, it took two days. So I. There's no explanation of what's going on. Um, but the city's meeting its deadlines and the printer is meeting the deadlines.
Right, because I mean, I know that I received mine last month, like, like, close to the deadline, like, I received it today also, like you said, and mine did show up the mailbox today, so. I know that we've, once again, we've extended the waived the late fees a little bit. I mean, I hate to continue to do it, but at the same time. If people are only having five days, you know, before their water bills due, sometimes it just, you know. People need a little bit more time to budget for it, so I don't know how the rest of council feels on it.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I actually was in the office of the Postmaster General um, for the city of East Point last week. Because I received a piece of mail that was. Demolished. And it was, it was something that I needed to have replaced. And he did tell me he was having a hard time finding employees. Uh. And that they were short employees. They're trying their best to get out things as. Best as possible, but I I told him, I said, I think one day I received mail on Sunday night. And he said, yeah, you did. So it is. Right now, the post office is having a whole bunch of problems with not having enough people. Um, in fact, I think I was in his office on Wednesday. Of last week, so. This is a post office problem. And I think that we should also extend. Uh, the late charges right now.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh. You know, let's, let's face it, uh. It's not our fault that whatever is doing, happening with the mail servers, um, we really don't have any. Authority to do anything about that, but we do have authority. And our responsibility is our citizens of this city. And if we can help. Anybody in our city, whether it's a delay for the dog license or. Given an extension for the paint or water bill, then. That ought to be our first concern, and if we have to. Bend over backwards or bend, bend the rules a little bit without breaking it, then I think, I think we really need to do that, uh. The city is not going to go broke if we extend that by thirty or sixty days, but the party, we're not going to go broke. But we're going to make. A lot of people happy in our city, and that's, I think that's our first job as elected officials. Amen.
I'm going back to uh, Councilwoman Lucino. How long were you talking about?
Well, I have to ask Mr. Blum anyways, because it's not the water bill that just came out. It was the water bill, it was the last water bill that people were getting late. Um, so they were already due. I mean, I've been getting these, I got the complaints after. Our last meeting, because they were due after our last meeting, but that's because people were actually getting their bills after our last meeting, which was before this meeting, so. Um. I don't know if we could go back and even uh, make that adjustment.
That for the month of February, the the penalties are already added before the March bill comes out. And the only way to do it would be to manually go through every account and remove the penalties.
Okay, so, I guess, I guess with that said. I don't think that, because the bills came out for March already, like, I I know, I think most people did receive their bill today. Um. But I guess maybe if administration can kind of keep us updated if they hear anything, so we can try to be proactive before those late fees are put on.
And that'll make it. My thing is, um, I understand, we don't want to, we want to waive late fees when. You know, things aren't, you know, in our control, but the post office is being behind, that might be out of our control for a while. Due to, due to this pandemic, it's a lot of things that is out of our control. And so, but as a city, you know, we can't always waive, uh, you know, waive the late fees. I think we did it. Um, tremendously. You know, and gave people breaks, so that's why I'm asking you have to give me, um, give council a month and let it, or a month or some time and let. Mr. Blum know, because. If that's the case, and we're dealing with the post office in East Point or the Postmaster, or. Whatever it may be, we'll be waiving late fees for the rest of the year. So, Mr. Blum, what do you think? What are you thinking?
Well. With. When we set water sewer rates, the late fees are part of the revenues that are generated, so every time you waive it. Is more money that has to be covered on. Future water bill increases. I mean, that's the other thing to keep in mind. Um. Yeah, I I always, you would, if it's our fault, we fix it. If it's somebody else's fault. There's nothing, not much we can do about it. Um. I don't see the post office cutting us a check for forty thousand dollars every month of the late fees we're missing.
Agreed. And as a council, we, I pay water bills too, so you know, I want my late. Late fees waived, but as. As a leader of this community, annoying and moving forward, we have, you know, a job to do. We have to make sure. Things are paid and things are done, and if it's not on us now, if it's our fault, like Mr. Blum said, then I can see that. We're waiving things, but since it's on the post office, and like I said, due to this pandemic, a lot of things backlog, UPS, post office. Dog, you know, dogs going to the, you know, the vets and things like that, even going to the doctor. We can, we, that's none of our control, but we still have to keep moving forward as a city.
Mayor, I had one question for Mr. Blum.
Yes, sir, please.
Uh, what's the normal day of the month we expect the bill to be released?
Released? Um, the goal is to try to have it out by the first of each month.
Okay, so. If it's the first, um, people that get the bill emailed to them would get it that day, then we're saying that's the day.
Correct. Well, I should, sometimes the emails go out the next day. The the goal is to get it to the printer by the first of the month, so. Yeah, the emails might be a day later than the printer.
Sure, okay, because, yeah, in January, I'm just looking at my bills. I didn't get my bill until the twelfth in email, and then it was February fifth. Last month, so that one's just like three, four days late.
And and that was why we waived the penalties in January, because we knew the bill went out late due to the. The Christmas holidays and all that.
Yeah.
Because that was our fault for going out late.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman?
No, that's all I had, so I don't think we need a motion for that. I just wanted to have that discussion tonight.
Okay, thank you for that discussion. Going back to uh, the new business, item H, discussion on evaluation of liaison for boarding commissions. This was brought up by Councilwoman Moore, Ms. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. Yeah, I was uh. Looking at the different uh, boards. And I think that we need to do an evaluation on how many boards everyone sits on. And I would like to be appointed to a couple of them.
Okay. Would you want to do that tonight?
Uh, well, at least, at least, yeah, I do. So Cardi, how many boards do you sit on?
Uh, sure, so yeah, Councilmore, I was gonna speak up. I'm on three of them, um, and I've been on DDA and beautification for a long time, and uh. Just at this last organizational meeting was appointed as liaison to uh, planning commission.
Okay.
So I was gonna say, if you uh. If you're interested in DDA or beautification, I've been on those a while, so be happy to shake it up a bit there.
Sarah?
Do you ask me?
Yes.
I'm on two, um, I'm on the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission and the Parks Commission.
Okay. And Curly?
I'm on, I'm, I'm on to the library or the housing commission.
Okay, so we actually have fourteen boards, and I know that some of, some of them probably only meet when there is a, you know, an appeal. And they may not meet every month, so there are actually several boards that no one is sitting as a liaison for.
Um, Councilwoman Moore, some boards don't have liaisons. The ones we named are the ones that have liaisons. Other boards and commissions don't have liaisons, like. Um, I don't believe ZBA has a liaison. Um. There's a couple of others.
Rare, the Local Officers Compensation Commission.
Right.
Um, Construction Board of Appeals.
Ms. Moore, let me ask you this. Which one do you feel that you want to be on? What, which one that you take interest in? Let's start from there.
Well, if uh, if some, several of them don't actually have liaisons on. Um, my first pick was the Board of Appeals, but I know that they would not meet until um. There was an appeal. Um, the Planning Commission. Uh, the Board of Ethics. Different ones that I had put out here, DDA, I had, you know, put that out there too, so. Uh, Zoni Board of Appeals, but if several of them don't have liaisons normally, then I wouldn't want to sit on a board that normally doesn't have a liaison.
Well, you mentioned planning. And that is what Councilman DeMonico sits on. You want to? Let her get on planning, Mr. DeMonico? Because you have, you, you have. Two other ones, DDA and beautification, where you want to stay there.
Sure, Mayor, yeah, I I prefer to stick with planning because I've only been on for a short time here, was just um. Uh, appointed the liaison at at our last organizational meeting.
Okay. I was gonna say. Um, Ms. Moore beyond playing, because she was actually on the board, so she actually knows what's going on, being you being new. That's just an idea for me, and she had the background of um, construction.
Well, that was the board that I served on last year.
Yeah.
Planning Commission.
Um, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that you mentioned you might be interested in DDA. I know Councilman DeMonico has that one also.
Ms. Moore, what about DDA?
Um. DDA would work.
Okay. Any other one you think about that? Councilman? Don't mind, are you swapping out for you?
Actually, I'm writing on my paper now, which ones actually have liaisons that cover them. I have to write them down. Uh, Cardi, which three? You said the planning has liaison, DDA has liaison, and what was your other one, Cardi?
Beautification.
Beautification. Okay. And Sarah, your two were the.
Parks and arts.
Arts and arts.
Parks and arts.
Oh, parks and arts. Okay.
And I have um, the library and uh, housing.
And housing, okay. So, quick question, um. Is there a reason why there aren't liaison for the other ones? Does anybody have to answer? Mr. Albrecht might have the answer to that.
Uh, tr- historically and traditionally, there have not been um. Liaisons for those various boards and commissions. Um, why specifically, I I'm not sure, uh, why the uh. Back when those boards were created, uh, a very long time ago, why the uh, why the city decided not to have a liaison for those various boards? I think that the the council um, could. Create a liaison position if it so choose for the various subboards, if that's a direction that the uh, the council wanted to go in.
Sure. Mayor, if I, could I comment on this real quick too?
Yes, please.
Uh, sure, yeah, I think like uh, the ZBA or um, there's another one we were talking about just now.
Maybe.
Which one you said?
Probably the um, Construction Board of Appeals. Those only meet when those are appealed.
Yeah, so the, those two, I think, you know, we could have a liaison for sure for those. I think some of them, like the Local Officers Compensation Commission. I I would. Imagine that when um, they don't have a liaison because they talk about the pay of the city council, so it'd be kind of awkward.
Right.
Well, they don't, they they don't meet but every two years anyway.
Yeah, that's, yeah, only one meeting every two years, like you're saying, and then. I I'd say the same thing for the Ethics Board probably would. Uh, not have a city council liaison, I. I personally would think. Um, but probably like any of the other boards, um. We could. I don't see probably any reason why not.
Oh, Cardi, on on the, Madam Mayor, if I could just address, on the Construction Board of Appeals. I don't know as if that board uh, has ever met.
I was just gonna ask that.
I, I'm not aware of that board, or ever hearing about that board conducting a meeting.
Thank you, correct.
Okay. So moving forward, so we can keep this party going, um, what you guys want, what are you guys thinking?
Um, I'll motion to make Councilwoman Moore liaison to the Downtown Development Authority.
I'll support that.
Moving and supporting, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
I I do have one more question, I'm so sorry. Um, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
The Recreational Authority of Roseville and East Point, no one said, there is no board for that? I mean, no, no liaison for that?
Let us finish it, let us finish this roll call and then you can bring that back up. Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay. Let's do that roll call over, please.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Moore, you wanted to add it. To be, and another one, and we can.
Yeah, uh, the lia- um, a liaison for the Recreational Authority of Roseville and East Point Recreation Services. Um, I think that there should be a liaison for that particular. Um. Board.
I agree.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure if Mr. Albrecht might be able to answer this too. I think that would have to be voted on. By the people of East Point and Roseville to have liaisons, because they're the ones that voted on that. Bylaws. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I believe I was trying to bring the bylaws up, uh, those bylaws were created uh, several. Se- several years ago, and I believe there's a specific um. Uh, number of members and uh, representatives from each of the communities. Who uh, serve on that board. I believe that there's a member of city administration, uh, Elke, if you're still there.
I'm here.
I believe, I'm not sure who from city administration sits on the rare. He used to be.
Mr. Marochi does.
I didn't know if Joe still sat on that.
He does.
On that uh, in that position.
Moving right along, um, Ms. Moore?
So was that, so what is the answer to um, Sarah's question? Is it something that has to be voted on or? Or not?
Yeah, I I don't, thank you, I don't believe that the city council. Could uh, just simply vote to add a liaison member to that. I think it would have to either be a vote uh, of of both communities to add a member, or it has to go to a vote of the people. I'll uh, it's been some time since I've looked at the bylaws, but there are specific uh, requirements contained in the bylaws that were approved by both of the communities. Uh, but I can get that answer as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Um, I think Councilwoman Moore, you certainly could. At least in the meantime, while we're figuring that out, you know, of course, they're public meetings, so you could uh, be unofficial liaison and, you know, sit in on the meetings and um. You know, report back to us if you want, or, you know, listen to them, or whatever you'd like to do in the meantime till that's figured out. Can't see why not.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing that would prevent anything like that from happening.
Yeah, I I normally listen in to, I try to listen to their meetings when I can, because I'm on parks and a lot of it, you know. So, yeah, you definitely could.
It just wouldn't be a formal appointment as a liaison, but certainly a council member could uh. Uh, could act as almost a de facto uh, liaison uh, member.
I will. If if it's a public meeting, then anyone can actually sit on it and listen, correct?
That's. That's correct. So what we will do is, we'll be waiting for, uh, Mr. Allright to give that information about, um, changing how we can make liaisons for the, uh, commissions and boards and things like that, so you can get an additional, um, seat if you like. So you have choices to pick from, unless another council member wants to, you know, you know, switch their position with you, you know, moving forward. How does that sound?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to pay bills, Council.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of one million, ten thousand, eight hundred, thirty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Support.
Moving and supported, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Just double checking, Councilwoman Luci, that new number, uh, yes.
Councilmember Curly? Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you. Next is the second hearing of the public. We will now open the second hearing of the public. We ask everyone to be respectful and make sure that your phones are on silent. When someone is speaking, give them their respect. And when you are speaking, give the audience respect as well. Please open the second hearing of the public.
Alright. I'm not seeing any hands right now and there's nothing in the chat. Still nothing in the chat. And no hands are raised, Mayor.
Thank you. The second hearing of the public is now closed. Going to Mayor and Council reports, starting with Councilman Curly.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just one quick thing, um, after our discussion about the reappointments to the Planning Commission of being tabled, uh, I would just ask that, um, when the agenda, I think Sarah mentioned that, uh, would be at our next council meeting. Now, when the agenda is made out, um, the, um, first item has to be the reappointment of the, of the four people that are up for reappointment in itself. Uh, and then if that doesn't pass, then the next item on the agenda can be appointments, not reappointments, but appointments. Um, mixing the two together didn't work tonight, didn't work at all. So I'm suggesting, uh, Madam Mayor, that the first, uh, agenda item would be reappointments. And then if that doesn't pass, then we would deal with the next item on the agenda, which would be appointments to the Planning Commission. But if, if it does pass, but the reappointment of the four people, that next item on the agenda wouldn't be necessary and you would move on. So, um, I'm asking you, Mayor, to, uh, consider that. And that's all I have tonight.
Yes, sir. Also, um, Councilman Curly, you also have the power to put that on the agenda, so if you want it like that before it comes out and is printed, you can put that on there as well. And you also, in the beginning of each meeting, you can add or you can subtract, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, I, I can, I can guarantee you that there's gonna be more than two people, um, that could be possibly on the agenda to be considered. If, if the first item on agenda doesn't pass, there's gonna be more than two people.
Okay, something to think about, thank you. Um, Council, Councilwoman Moore, please.
Okay, I would just like to say that, um, COVID is real. Everyone know that I was sick last time, but I didn't have COVID, thank you. That, um, however, um, my thing is that everyone should be vaccinated when their number is called. Um, because that's gonna be the best way of defeating COVID. Um, there are too many people dying, too many people getting sick, places are opening back up. Um, even though we have stabilized, we have stabilized very high numbers and we haven't come down from those high numbers. And so one of the best ways to en- hoping to ensure that these numbers come down is for everyone to be vaccinated when their turn in number is called. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and I'm glad you, you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman DeMonaco?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and, uh, yeah, I support you one hundred percent, Councilwoman Moore, about taking vaccines. Hopefully, everyone does take their vaccine when it's their turn in line and glad you're feeling better too. Uh, so everyone, please, please listen to Councilwoman Moore on that. Um, I wanted to just touch on a couple of things from the MSU Extension Citizen Planner Program that, uh, we've done, uh, twice now, five to go. Uh, we talked about just a couple of interesting things I thought that I'd like to share. We had like a discussion on zoning versus what they call police power ordinances. Just thought that whole, like, discussion was interesting. I've never really looked at it through that lens, I guess. So I've been learning a lot and in that first, had learned a lot in that first session. Um, it talked about the different laws that are about planning and zoning and, uh, court cases and all these different things. Um, you know, some of course is familiar, but some new. And about looking at just things in general, uh, you know, everyone owns private, you know, or I shouldn't say everybody, but people own private property, right? In the city, but we also have to look at the common good and it's always, uh, you know, that's the hard part, weighing that, right? So it's been an interesting conversation in these, uh, sessions. Um, it's like a general session and then they do breakout sessions, which I think have been great. And it's been different people in the two different weeks, so you just meet people from different communities. And it's been, uh, I, I think it's been very good. Uh, the second one was about planning for the future of your community specifically, and we talked a lot about the master plan there. And of course, I think most people listening probably know that early twenty nineteen, we adopted a new plan. So, uh, we've already gone through adopting one, but now we gotta implement it. So it's been interesting to talk in, uh, with other people in other cities that are maybe at different points in the process. Maybe they haven't adopted a new one in a long time, or they just did a new one like we did, like, uh, the city of Warren. So it's been, uh, been very interesting. And then hopefully everybody, uh, watched our Mars Rover land, uh, like I did, uh, watched Percy land on Mars. That was really exciting. If you haven't seen it, you gotta watch the video of it landing, just a couple of minutes. Um, parachute comes down and lands on Mars and, uh, seeing those first couple pictures come across will be interesting. We'll see for, I'm sure, many years to come. I guess I should knock on wood, hopefully. It, we don't lose communication or anything, but, uh, I think that was pretty exciting. Of course NASA is your, uh, federal tax dollars that work too, so check it out when you get a minute. And that's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman DeMonaco. Councilman Lucido?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first, I would like to, um, thank, um, McLaren Hospital, Walgreens, uh, Ms. Doom and Mayor Owens for setting up the vaccines in East Point this week. Um, I agree with Ms. Moore and Mr. Councilman DeMonaco that definitely go get your vaccines. I've been trying to help, um, seniors every week get appointments that have been unable to get appointments, um, on Tuesdays with the Health Department. So it's really nice to have something local for them, someplace closer where they can, you know, go and get their vaccines. Um, also, I'd just like to take a moment to thank the Arts Commission, Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, for all the work they did last month with Black History Month, um, on their website, on the displays they've been doing, um, at City Hall and for Women's History Month. So, um, I do encourage everyone to join their Facebook page. Um, they had, with COVID this year, some of their events had to be canceled, so they're trying to do some online events and things like that, trying to get the community more involved. So hopefully, if you know people in the community, encourage them to join. They're trying to do fun activities for the kids and things like that, so I really, um, think it's good for families. The Commission has, uh, really done a lot. Other than that, that's all I have this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for bringing up the fact of vaccinations, you and Ms., uh, Moore, speaking on that. I've been working really hard with the executive of McComb County as well as our state representative. I can't take all the credit for, um, getting the vaccinations in Walgreens, but I will take the credit for working hard to make it happen. And so, um, connecting and communicating with leaders throughout our community to help and make that happen. I want to thank, uh, our state rep for saying, uh, where are those vaccinations at for East Point? We got them everywhere else. Um, we need to focus on East Point. And so me and him been talking, and that is why we have those vaccinations right here in Walgreens because we were making sure that we, we, uh, are at the table for the residents of East Point and having those real conversations. And what I am working on now is to get additional vaccinations for our seniors, um, throughout, uh, East Point and, you know, and also inviting neighboring communities. But what we're trying to do is make sure that the essential workers are getting them, the seniors, our police, our, all of our police have been vaccinated in our fire department, so make sure that happened. We're also making sure our teachers are getting vaccinated. And we also have to always make sure our seniors. And so thank you, Ms. Lucido, for also, um, working with the seniors and doing that. So what we're doing is, um, finding the location right now that is a central, uh, central space, um, that we can have, uh, those vaccinations implemented right now. So I'm working on that right now. But right now, if you want to get vaccinated, we have one in Walgreens right there on Ten Mile Road, and St. Clair Shores is also doing it. And also a location in Sterling Heights. But what we're trying to do is a lot of people don't have access to vehicles and can't get certain places. So what, not only am I trying to get a location for East Point, uh, residents who are seniors, we're actually having people go inside these how, the senior housing for those who can't leave their apartments. And so we're working on that as well. So I just want to let the residents know that I am always working for you. I'm always having those conversations. And even though you always don't see things outside, you know, I'm working inside. So I just want to let you know, we're working on the vaccinations. We have so many locations. I'm working one, for one that has an additional, um, vaccinations as well. So hopefully, we get approved for that and you'll see something in the next couple of weeks. And whatever, whatever I come up with, we'll have it on Facebook, we have a press release, and we'll be working especially for you. So we want to make sure that our residents are taken care of. You're always my main priority among everyone to know that. And just because you don't always see stuff being done, again, that doesn't mean I'm not working on it. So again, everybody stay safe, stay healthy, and stay prayerful. Can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
Now, Madam Mayor, I would, I would move that, uh, council go into closed session for city manager evaluation.
Alright, thank you for saying that. I just skipped that. I'm right, look, I'm skipping stuff. Thank you, sir.
That's okay.
Motion.
I, I didn't hear a support.
Support.
Yeah, yeah, supported. Thank you for saying that. So we have motion support to go onto closed session for the city manager evaluation. Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Mayor, how much time are you gonna give us to do our thing before we go get back?
Five minutes, five minutes. And then we go back and we go into closed session. And then if anyone wants to stay, all we doing is, um, doing an adjournment. So you're welcome to stay and wait for us to come back out. So we're going into closed session. Yeah, five minutes, Council.
Hi, Otis, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Hi, um, once, uh, all the council members go back and we go into closed session, um, our office, uh, usually, or I, I can't think of a time that we've actually sit, sat in on the city manager's evaluation when it's in closed session. So I'm just gonna ask for permission to be released from the meeting.
Okay.
Permission granted.
Thank you.
Otis, I can't put myself in the waiting room. It won't let me go.
Oh, hi, Mariah.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
I'm good, thank you.
Excellent.
You won't let me put you there.
Hey, Mariah.
Hi.
Hi. When, uh, we go back in, with, with our break, you'll have to turn off the recording.
Yeah.
And then just, uh, send bodies on their way. We'll have to reopen it. Um, I'm trying to think of how we can do this.
I think we pass it over to Cardi, because I think he knows how to run it.
Yeah, and then you guys can log off and go home.
Yeah.
From your end, okay?
Yeah. I don't know, let's see. Who? Otis, can you make him the host, Cardi?
Yep.
And then everyone else has been put into the waiting room?
Just make him the host, or should I make him co-host?
Uh, make him the host, because we'll log off and he has to stand to run. And then when he gets back from a break, we'll let him know about the recording.
Is everybody back? I see. When I miss more and, I missed the Monaco.
Cardi.
Well, Madam Mayor, your dress matches your woman's history munch beautifully. You totally coordinate with that behind you.
Thank you, thank you. I finally learned how to do this green screen thing. I was inside everybody out doing me, so I was like, let me figure this out. Ow, it's all a little background thing out, so I said, okay.
Good for you, it looks nice.
Thank you.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I, I just wanted to, uh, request permission to be excused from the closed session. We typically don't, uh, participate in, uh, the city manager's evaluation. I don't think Elkie would have any objection to us, uh, sitting this one out.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, go to sleep.
Well, not gonna sleep, yeah, but.
We need to record closed session?
No, we don't. Oh my gosh, it's still like really early.
Yeah.
Hey. Let's keep it that way, right?
Right.
So we don't need to record, so we can stop recording?
No, no. When we go back into session.
We had a.
That point, she'll stop the recording and start taking people out, or before them, maybe right before it, I don't know.
Yes, everyone is out of the, um, everyone is out of the meeting, um.
Okay.
I can stop the recording.
Yes, we pass the hosting over to you so that we can log off. Um, if everything is all set and you're able to stop the recording, then I'll log off on Otis's end and mine is turned off as well.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I think it lets me, let me see, pause.
There's no one in the waiting room, right?
Uh, we have, uh, George looks to be hanging out and, uh.
Moles a lot of that in.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing they left their phone on, I don't know, they're gonna be surprised. Start hearing audio. So, yep, the, that, I let everyone back in, yeah, Reola dropped there and looks like George's is still left, but that's all that was left in the waiting room.
Okay, sounds good. We are now back in session. Those who have been in the waiting room, welcome back. Um, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Wait, let me finish, let me, this right.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Can I get a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Support.
Moving and supported, please call the roll.
Oh, sorry. I am terrible at this. Alright. Who, who put the motion out there? You never want me.
Harvey.
Of course it was Harvey Curly.
I say yes. I say yes.
Okay, who supported it?
Me, yes.
Okay, Cardi, yes. Who's next?
Oh, yes.
Alright, how about Sylvia?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
They have a lousy secretary.
And it's nine twenty-eight.
You guys have a good night.
Nine twenty-eight.
Okay, I won, I won the time.
Sorry about that.
Oh, I see a lunch in the future. Alright.
Bye, everyone. Goodbye, everyone. Have a good night.
You too.
Goodbye.